Yes, will you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Ambrose.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Pastor Don does the invocation.
Please pray with me. Father God, we just want to come into your presence at this time to ask for your wisdom here tonight. We pray, Father, for the decisions that are made here that, Lord God, you will provide us with the wisdom to follow your direction in this city. We just ask for the leaders that you might bless them during this time, you might be with them during this time as they negotiate all the decisions that have to be made. And, Father God, we just continue to ask that you bless this city. Be with our firemen, be with our policemen, keep them safe as they're continuing to work out there. And just, Father, just be with us as we go this evening in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Did roll call? Next item? Mayor interim city attorney, report out from closed session.
There was an item taken into consideration by the council. However, no reportable action was taken at today's closed session.
Are there any subsequent need items?
Mayor Protem, we have no subsequent need items.
Seeing none, approval of agenda as posted or as amended.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
Second.
Motion by Vera, second by Ambrose. Call for the question.
Kale?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Creighton is absent. Raymond?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Supervisor McDaniel is not here, so we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Are there any items on the consent calendar that the city council would like to remove for separate discussion and possible action? Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will remove from the consent calendar for separate action.
Like to remove item number five for more information.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak regarding any of the items on the consent calendar?
Good evening. Mr. Miller, 334 Silver Drive at Outwater, also pastor of Victory Baptist, 1280 Sierra Vista Street. I was just wondering if you could give us some more information. I'm not sure if I missed something on number seven. Just wondering what that was going to all entail and how it was going to benefit the city. I'm sure it is going to benefit us, but I wasn't sure if the council could give us more information about that.
Number seven, okay. Can we pull item seven for more information as well? Anyone else? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
Motion by Kale?
Oh, second.
Second by Vera. Call for the question.
Vera?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Creighton is absent. Raymond?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So we'll move on to item number five. Rejecting proposals and authorizing re-advertising and release of revised request for proposals for landscape maintenance services in landscape maintenance districts. Public Works Director Haddix, can you come up?
Good evening. The recommendation was to pull and then allow an opportunity to go back over the document. Because when I reviewed the document, there was information that was lacking, and I couldn't determine why that it was such disparity in the bids. One at a hundred thousand, the other one close to three hundred thousand. So going through it, I noticed that there was no specifics in exactly what we were requiring them to do. And so what I would like to have an opportunity to put specifics in it so we can make it more manageable for us, for this contract.
So the rebid is going to, or the re, going back out is going to be more detailed information?
Exactly.
Okay.
So at least we know what we're getting. Like, for instance, the square footage of each of the assessment districts, right? Well, then there was no square footage there identifying how many trees, what the lawn size was, and any of that. So there'd be just more specific drill down into it so we can better understand what we're paying for.
Do you want to have anything else?
Do we have like an ETA as to when this will go back out and how long we're giving the new bids to come in?
I anticipate that it to be back on the streets before the end of August. So another three, four weeks, we should be back on the street.
Okay.
Thank you. Any comments from the public?
My name is Dan Devine. I reside at 1483 Field Crest Court in Outwater. My concern is about this landscape maintenance. Is that what we're talking about right now, Article Five?
Number Five, yes.
Okay. Are they, is the city looking to outsource this to take care of these local medians and stuff? Because I've lived in this subdivision since day one on 2006, and it's horrible. The weeds are five, six feet tall right now. Last time they were done was before winter. They just did the, on Avenue One, they did the south side. They go on the weed whack, knock the weeds down, they trim the bushes up. Hey, it looks great, but there's no set schedule. And it doesn't be, it's not completed all the time. They might do view hack on one side, and then I don't see them for months. There's the medium on Grand View. When you come in there, it's never been touched. It's never been weeded at all. It's horrible. There's a dead tree on one of the roundabouts. Looks like a Charlie Brown tree. It's been dead for three years. Just sitting there, and they, parks come out, trim on the edge, go around the dead tree, move on. And what really gets me is that all these common areas, you got Parks and Rec going out doing just the grass, because they got the mowers, I guess. And then you got Public Works coming out and doing the weeding. It doesn't make any sense to me. And then you got a guy in a little red truck going around spraying. And I talked to him several times, and he's just, his thing is that, you know, the money situation, getting the herbicides or whatever to kill the weeds. What's the, what good is it to wipe all that out with a weed whacker and then not spray it? And then, like I said, there's no agenda. There's nobody ever coming like every month, every other month.
Well, I know our new Public Works Director, Mr. Haddix, he's got a plan in place now that's going to be scheduled and agendized. And hopefully, you know, when we get this resolved here, I share your frustrations, 100%.
I mean, I want to be proud of my city. I've been here for 39 years, and I'm disgusted. When I go down and I see weeds and stuff everywhere, I know Public Works has a lot of other stuff to do. I know you guys just came off of furlough. I get it. I also get it when we went through, you know, the recession of the housing market. I get it, the tax base, but I got my tax bill here. I pay $800 a year for the city at Outwater. They don't call it a Melrose. Something's never going to go away, but it's for city, fire, upkeep, whatever. I don't mind paying for city and fire and all that. I mean, I see your grounds out here are perfectly clean. They look great. Not my subdivision, not the subdivision across the street from me, not the SinCon subdivision that goes up to Avenue Two. It's horrible.
Mr. Devine, maybe I can have our Public Works Director, Mr. Haddix, get your contact information, and he can reach out to you. That is our concern, and that is what we're doing tonight. We're asking to reject the bids that we received so that, as he described, we can make it clear on what our expectations are. We have a regular schedule where they're going to be, when they're going to be. But our concern is we want to make sure what they're doing, if it's going to be mowing, if it's going to be the watering system, what their responsibilities are, and identify those specifically, so that way we can hold them accountable. We can make sure that you're getting what you're charged for.
No, exactly. And I mean, and when you talk about the, I mean, I walk all the time over there, and there's so many sprinkler pipes that are broken and not being fixed, and it's just very, very frustrating. And I know my wife, she sent an email to Paul, the mayor, and he addressed the same thing, what you're saying. I just wanted to put my two cents in because I live there since day one, and it's, you know, I don't like what I see.
All right. We appreciate your comments, and that is something we're working on and addressing. Is anyone, is there a motion to approve rejecting?
Number Five?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve rejecting the proposals and authorizing re-advertising and release of a revised request for proposal for landscape maintenance services in landscape maintenance districts.
Motion by Vera. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ambrose. Call for the question.
Vera?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Creighton is absent. Raymond?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item seven, correct. Okay, item seven. Approving site lease agreement with T-Mobile West LLC for antenna facilities at Osborne Park. Mr. Haddix.
Thank you again. I think that asking for approval of this request, I mean, it's meeting all the standards that the city has set out. I think that it's going to provide better services, improve services of what's currently in place. So just the recommendation is just to move forward with this one.
And just to identify too, this is going to have fiscal impact, so the city will receive income on this lease in the amount of $16,000 for the first year, and then there'll be COLAs added each subsequent year.
So Mayor Protem, council, just to add a little more information, there is a site lease attached to this. This is one of those typical leases you see where there's an antenna facility, antenna put up, and in this case, it would be in Osborne Park. The lease is for about 225 square feet of the park. Lease is, as the city manager mentioned, does have the component. I know that the question was, is the city going to benefit? Yes, there is rents. There is rent due of the $1,400 a month. There is a CPI of every year. It goes up by the, by a CPI or by an inflator. And there's also a $125 a month after the first year increase every month to cover costs. So there is, there is a component here that will benefit the city.
Any questions from the council? Open up for a public comment.
Just to follow up to that is on the fiscal side of it, so is that, is that normally what you would get in return as far as revenue? Because $16,000 doesn't sound like very much for an antenna. So is that, is that a normal amount? And is this something that we looked at leasing or having a contract with other companies besides T-Mobile West? Because I'm not, I'm not sure. Is this something that we already have, and we're just extending it, or is it something new? And if it is, did we reach out to any other companies, and is the, are the numbers what you would expect? That's, I'm not against it, just so you know. I just am trying to make sure I understand.
I don't, I don't know if Mr. Haddix wants to take this, but I will speak as far as we do have other antennas in place throughout the city. And typically, the vendor or the applicant will come to the city and say, we want to place this somewhere, so we didn't go out soliciting this one. But for, we did some negotiating, and they came with a much lower proposal. We were able to negotiate through staff a better rate for us, and then they will also be responsible for all utility charges to that onsite and responsibility for any liability as well. So it has been a negotiated contract for the city.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, close public comment. Bring it back to the dais. Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the number seven for the site lease agreement in the form of the approved by the city attorney and T-Mobile West LLC for an antenna facility located at Osborne Park.
Motion by Kale. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Vera. Call for the question.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Creighton is absent. Raymond?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Public hearings. Confirming engineers' report and ordering the annual levy for the lighting and drainage and landscape assessment maintenance districts for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the council. The city of Outwater has previously approved the formation of the city's maintenance assessment districts, along with the methodology of applying the assessments to the properties within each district. The levy and the collection of these assessments provides for the ongoing care, operations, and maintenance of storm drainage facilities, street lighting, and/or landscaping through the annual assessments paid by the property owners who directly benefit from the specific services provided. Staff has worked with Willdan Financial Services to assist in the preparation of the engineers' report being presented tonight. The details of the cost and rates for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 for each district are included in the engineers' reports. On June 10th, 2019, council adopted resolutions initiating the proceedings, declaring the intent, excuse me, declaring intent to levy primarily approving the engineers' report and setting the date and time for the public hearing. This is the public hearing. This action requests that the city council open the public hearing to receive testimony. There was one resolution before council this evening to approve the levy and collection of assessments for the city's maintenance assessment districts. Upon conclusion of the public hearing, the city staff recommends that the city, that the council adopt the resolution approving the engineers' reports and setting the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 2019, 2020. I have Mickey with Willdan here from Willdan Financial Services to assist in answering any of your questions that you might have.
Good evening. Mickey Ashley, Willdan Financial, 27368 Via Industria in Temecula. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the rates, the history of the districts, how they're charged, and the like.
Does the council have any comments, questions?
Just kind of to, to make it clear, we're not adopting a whole new way that this is being ran. We've always charged the lands, these fees to the lighting and landscape districts. And this is, when we're moving forward, and, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, this is what, as we move forward and we go out for bid to maintain these lighting and landscape districts, that's where it'll be paid out of when we talked about the frustration, what's, what's going on with the lighting and all of the landscaping. So each district, the funds that are collected, that's why we're getting the bids, that's what's going to cover. And even though those have already, we're currently already paying those by going out to bid and getting an outside source to do that, I think it's going to be taken care of in a much more timely, professional, and trackable. So we, we all do. Oh, we all do. I agree. So just kind of clarification, because I know we earlier discussed frustration and the changes. This isn't something that we're just beginning to charge. It's always been charged. We're just trying to put it in a more efficient manner so that we're actually receiving the services that the, that the customers are being charged for.
Any comments? Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, if I may, I would like to point out that the, the range of the rates throughout the zones for the landscape maintenance districts, it ranges from zero per residential unit to $137 per unit per year. And the, the lighting and drainage districts range from zero per unit to $387. Just to give an idea of what, what the rates are this year, what we're proposing.
My main comment, and I've already talked to the city manager about this, and this is directed towards her, is, you know, once again, here we are proposing to raise fees on the public, not providing a service. And in order to do that, there's got to be some form of justification. And I know we talked, I don't know if you want to mention anything as far as any numbers. I mean, because that's, that's things. I am the one that has to go back out into the public, into my district, and sell why we're doing what we're doing. And I'm unable to do that at this point because each and every year, we do the same thing each and every time, and the results haven't gotten any better. And that's the definition of crazy.
So my conversation with Mayor Protem Raymond is we can go out and collect the data to show what was charged to these districts. I know that part of the concern was not having a structure or a set time and what was being done, worked, and when. With our new Public Works Director, that is something that is being corrected on all aspects. Work orders are in place. We're tracking what work is done, the time it's taken to be done, and recouping those costs when, when able to. I think if, if it's the council's wish, we can get the data that we expended in these districts to bring to you at a future meeting to show you what was expended. But again, when we go out to bid for the RFP for this landscape district, these funds will be offsetting those, those expenses or that contractor's or the vendor's contract. So there will be, would be implications if we didn't approve it. We can postpone it if that's council's wish and bring you back more clearer information. But again, if, if council chooses not to accept these, then the general fund would have to pick up the difference.
Right, and I understand that, and there's huge importance here and implications again, because people are coming out of pocket, paying for things they're not getting. But in order to get it, they have to pay for it. So I understand completely, but we need the justification. And how, so I guess my question would be, how long would it take to get the data together?
We could get it together within a week.
So this is my recommendation. I would recommend postponing it to a later date till we get the data so we can compare and see where all the money's going.
Well, and then I have a question with that. So are we going off our current numbers as we get the bids in for the lighting and landscape districts to outsource that? Shouldn't we wait until we get our bids to set our fees? We don't know then, I mean, are we getting the cart before the horse to set the fees? What if we set them for a dollar and the, the bids come in at a dollar fifty? We really don't know yet what it's going to cost us from the bids, but we've set the price. We may be charging some districts too much and some too little. Or am I backwards in that thinking, or are we expecting this is what this landscape district pays? Can you provide the service for this? So I don't know how it's worded when that, when it goes out to bid, and I'm just kind of wondering.
It's going to be a little misconstrued anyway because we've had staff doing it. This year, we're anticipating that we're going to go out to bid and have the contractor do it. However, we do have a timeframe too, to get on the tax roll. So if we miss that, that window of opportunity, we won't be able to get it on the tax roll, so.
We won't be able to collect it. What is the date that we have to have it done to get on the tax roll?
It has to be on that tax roll by August 10th. So we have a small window. I don't know if, do you have more that you want to add as far as?
Yes, I would like to, to, as far as the proposed rates, what we do is we look at how much is in, is, are in the accounts. Each, each zone or district has a separate fund, and that money stays in there. So we look at what the balance is, and if there's enough money in there to cover things, then nothing's charged. And that's why in the landscape districts, only five of the 19 zones are being charged this year. And that's similar to last year. And the, and then again, the rates are, is it the highest rates, $137? And the, with the lighting and drainage maintenance districts, only 15 of the 31 are being charged this year. And, yeah, and again, that's based on if there's, if there's enough cash in the account, then it, then nothing's proposed to be charged. There's, the, the last week and a half of August is when we're feverishly coming up and getting all the information to the counties. And I know I can't, I have a commitment on the sixth, I think, is the next date. And I, I can't promise that somebody from our office can be up here on that date.
Oh, I understand that. That's, that's.
Lori, question. So if we don't get this approved prior to that date, will we collect no fees for those districts, or we will simply continue to collect what has been collected in the past?
We will not collect any fees, but I think it's important to identify that the landscape maintenance district, we're talking about one district that's going to have an increase in it. That's Redwood Estates, increased rate of 3228 the next year. No other landscape districts will be levying an increased assessment rate. So we're talking about one district that is upside down that we're in.
And is that due to not collecting enough in the past, so that account was, became a little defunct because we just simply didn't collect enough to cover that district?
On Redwood Estates, that, that one, I don't, I don't recall that that's had a, had a, an issue in the past. But I've, I've got, I can, I can look that up and.
The other increases that we're discussing were lighting and drainage. They were not landscape, so that's a difference. Those are services that they are receiving.
Okay.
Correct.
Anyone else have anything? All right. At this time, we'll open the public hearing.
Are we still talking about the landscape part?
Yes, sir. This is a time of public comment.
Okay.
Once again, I mean, you guys are talking numbers, Dan Devine, and you're talking numbers. And I know when I, I purchased my house in the subdivision, there was the no Melrose, you know, that was the big selling point. But to sign off on it, I have to pay this $800 a year, which was told to me, city, build a new fire station, okay? Lighting, storm drain, maintenance, all that. So I'm one person paying $800. And there's a ton of houses. There was nothing on the other side, on the south side of Avenue One, when I first moved in there. There wasn't anything there for years. And all those houses are full. Everybody that was foreclosed is full. That tax basis is coming in. So whether we're assessed. So whether we're assessed, as this eight hundred dollars is broken down into little bits and pieces of what goes to what, we're paying it. So I want fire, I want police, I want, I want my community to be, to be safe, but I wanna, I wanna be proud of it too. So, they can talk about zero, they can talk about one thirty-seven. For me, zero could be somebody, some older subdivision somewhere, some, that doesn't have all these infrastructure things, or plannings, or whatever, like I have at my subdivision. So maybe they're not assessed that way, I don't know. So I'm just, once again, just voicing my concern, you know, trying to get something done, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close public comment. I'll bring it back to the council. What do you guys wanna do?
So I know that you had, Brian, suggested to postpone it for a short amount of time. What, would we still be able to do that, Lori, and get it back on the tax roll? Or if we don't, can we simply leave things where they are? Do we, we change these annually, correct? I don't wanna not, okay, so I don't wanna wipe out what we're doing and take two steps backwards. But I think that we've all heard, and driving around town, see the concerns with the landscaping. I mean, it's, it's not just your, it's everybody's neighborhood, and we get calls daily and weekly. So it's frustrating for us to hear it, and it's frustrating for us to live it. So it is hard to raise, um, to raise fees. Now, the fees that are being raised, you stated, are the lighting and the sewer. So that, right now, we don't have it, we're not having a, any kind of problem with that service. So I don't know if, if Mayor Protem feels more comfortable waiting a week? I don't know if this is something that we could do a special meeting? I know we had some other stuff to talk about as well, get some more information, or what are your thoughts?
Kind of commented. So you have some different options, and I think the, our city attorney can elaborate on that, but we have several, you can either approve it as it is tonight, we can continue the public hearing to a date that you choose, we can approve part of it or all of it, you can separate it. So those are different options that you have.
What are your thoughts?
The will of the council, so whatever, whatever you guys decide.
Well, um, I, I, you know, like I just said, we hear it daily, weekly. I think that it's hard to assess a number when we don't know what it's gonna cost, but then again, we can't not get it on the tax, on the tax roll and collect nothing. That would just take a blow, and then next year, now, we're gonna be defunct. So instead of raising it ten dollars a month, now we're gonna raise it twenty-five a month, and it's harder to, to accept that, so, um.
You know, I, I'd say enough.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be to be twenty dollars.
So I'm sorry, sir, we closed public comment. Thank you.
So, I mean, it would, it would be my suggestion that until we can substantiate some higher numbers, just to, to leave things at the rate that we have right now, so that we have something to get on the tax bill, and, and then, before we have any raises, be able to prove to the citizens what, uh, what the cost is going to.
Is that a motion? Yes, go ahead.
And, and it's possible, councilmember, if I could add some, maybe just so we could, just some clarification. I think that the, the only issue as far as leaving the rates similar, the same as what they are right now, are with, with the landscape and maintenance district, right? Not with the lighting and, and drainage district. It's just with the landscape portion of it, 'cause I think that that's what folks are being very vocal about.
Absolutely.
But the, so that one is the one that we, we have, I believe, that for the, um, for the landscape maintenance districts, the Redwood Estates were the ones that were going to be levied at an increased rate. And I think that those were, and if I could ask, are represented from Willdan, I think that that, that was the, the, the district that was affected, right, for the landscape maintenance district? They're receiving an increase.
Uh, yes, it, um, it, that was the.
Can, can you please step up to the mic so we can get this on, the recording, please?
Yes, the, the Redwood Estates, um, yes, that, that, that went up, I think around twenty percent, or twenty-six percent, and it's still below the maximum rate. And the, the lighting and drainage, drainage assessment districts, those, um, those involve, there's a lot of pumps and piping and whatnot, and, and you've gotta keep enough money in the reserves to replace the, the equipment.
Correct, but, but I'm sorry to interrupt, but the question was, as far as the landscape and, and maintenance district, it's really the Redwood Estates that are receiving the increase. I think what Councilmember Viera, what you're, what you're mentioning is potentially, if a motion could be made to adopt the resolution that we have in front of the packet, however, amend it in order to take away that increase and leave the rates the same as they were last year for the landscape maintenance district portion, the Redwood Estates. But everything else, the light, the lighting and drainage district for everything that that covers, that was fine, because those services are being, you could see that those, those services are being offered.
Yeah, I think the main problem I have here is the, the landscaping. Um, what, the reason that we're raising Redwood, what is it with that particular district that difference, different, differentiates, you know, the word I'm trying to come up with, from the other districts on why that one fell short of having an evidence to sustain the services needed?
Yes, it just, um, the projected, uh, reserve balance, it just showed it dipped a little bit, and that's why we, we increased it, I think at six dollars per, per house for the year.
Per year?
And, just for my own clarification, I'm trying to find it, is, where is the Redwood Estates?
Brian, Redwood Estates, isn't that over Redwood and?
Well, it's north of here.
Are we getting an answer?
Yeah. There we go.
Yes.
I think it's right across the street, actually, just behind, most of it's behind the.
Yeah.
Commercial side.
It's over on Redwood Street.
Yeah, it's between W, certainly.
Okay. So I mean, was there something over there that happened, that we had extra expenditures on so that it fell defunct? Or has this district just never had a raise? And what, what happened that this one place, if we've been maintaining the rest in an adequate manner, how is just this one place?
It's on the screen.
There you go.
To answer that question, it appears that there wasn't enough charged last year, and that's why it was a little bit short.
Okay.
It, it was enough charged, what do you mean by that?
Well, uh, last year, we charged, I don't have the figures right in front of me, but it was char, well, I have the rates. It was charged twenty-six ninety-four per unit last year, and this year, we're recommending thirty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents per unit.
So you, that's a twenty-six percent increase?
That's about, it's close to twenty percent increase.
Twenty percent increase? And, and I, I don't know that there was that much done in that area.
Well, I think, though, what he said, and this is just the, the problem that we, that we're running into, is the rates were not increased, so we leave them where they are until now, we're in a, in a negative situation. Which is, if we don't move with the recommendation, what's gonna happen again? I think if the citizens are getting the services paid for, it's not gonna be as much of a problem, but we just need some reassurance as a council before we approve this. And I know that it's the direction of the city, I understand that, and I know New Public Works, I know we've got our new code enforcement, I know that we're moving forward, but the calls come in daily, and I see it, and I'm as frust, I'm a citizen here too, so I'm as frustrated as well. It just, citywide, it just, it looks bad. So it's, it's, it's just a bad taste in everyone's mouth, even though it's fifty cents a month. Yeah, but fifty cents a month, and we, they're not seeing the progress yet, we know that it's there, we know it's on the horizon, but it's really difficult to swallow that when you hear the word increase and you've seen nothing, nothing turn about. So that's, that's just the problem I have. It's not so much the fifty cents a month, it's, it's, we want, I want to be able to tell the citizens, yes, this is, if you don't take your raise this year, it's gonna double next year, but yes, this is going to happen in the next six months, you're going to see this. In the next three weeks, you're gonna see mowing. Something needs to just start happening, because we're just moving so slow, and it's spring and summer, and I mean, I forward some of them to you, but we're all getting calls daily about the dead grass and the weeds, and it's, it's just really.
And what I'm hearing from Councilmember Viera is, we, you're right, we, we don't, if we leave it status quo, we don't go with the increase until we see what costs and what services are getting done. We can leave it in the negative this year, we're going to, next year, obviously, have another negative. We will have a better idea, because we're going out to RFP, we'll see what's being charged, we may have to increase it. I mean, that, that may tell us we need a bigger increase, or, or not so much, but we just know that we're gonna have that negative still, that we're gonna have to address either today or down the road.
It's easier for me to approve and address it, once the citizens can look outside and see, see the work being done. It's just hard to, it's just hard to sell them something, promise after promise, and it's, you know, I know, you know, I'd had a couple of calls, and, and we had a, here at, at public hearing, and I know it was, you know, before our new director came, but, that this would be posted on the website, we would have a most schedule, things would be done, and so then you make those promises to the citizens, and it doesn't happen, and then you have to go back and say, well, I was, you know, then it's egg on our face. I would rather leave this, leave the rates where they are, aside of, uh, lighting and sewer, because those are already being maintained. Leave the fees where they're at, still get them on the tax roll, so we don't go completely backwards and take ten steps backwards. But before approving any kind of an increase, be able to prove to the citizens that they, here's a service that you're being offered, the service is adequate, and at least you're paying for an adequate service. Right now, they're, they've been paying the service for years now, and they haven't got the service. It's, and it's getting worse every year. It's, five or six years ago, it wasn't as bad, every year, it's getting worse. This year, by far worse than ever before.
So I have a question for legal. Is there a way with Councilmember Viera's proposal for the motion to separate out the landscape districts until, to a special meeting, where we keep it open, just to do that part with facts and figures that the city manager can get for us?
Yes, so, so, two options. I think what, um, one thing that, that Councilmember Viera was saying was potentially even amending the, the, the resolution, so the two options, amending the resolution in order to amend the, the landscape assessment maintenance district to, to receive no increases, to stay the same as currently, currently being assessed. There is also the, the motion that can be made to, to amend the current resolution in order to remove the landscape assessment maintenance district, and handle that at a later date. I think that if you're gonna call a special meeting, however, keeping them together, we're just trying to meet, we're just trying to beat the deadline of, I believe it was August tenth. We're trying to beat that deadline. So you could still keep them together and discuss altogether, but I think that, that one thing that was being discussed was potentially amending to leave the rates as currently, as could the current rates.
And the reason that, if we took care of this tonight, I know that over the next several weeks, we have vacancies coming up, and, and it might be difficult to have that special meeting and make sure that we have a quorum. And then, we have a problem, and now we don't get them on the tax roll, and then, that's even a bigger problem that we're facing, every district we have would now be defunct. So my suggestion would be that we amend it, leaving the rates where they are for the And then, if we have to make it up next year, at least by then, we'll be able to say, we are providing a service, and this is at least what you're paying for. I, I think the citizens deserve to, for once, get and then pay versus pay and then wait and see if you get.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Then, I, I will second that.
Okay. In so many words. Janelle, you got that?
Yeah.
Do you wanna clarify that a little bit for the record, please?
Absolutely. So the motion is to adopt.
I was just gonna ask the same thing.
The, the motion is to adopt the resolution as amended, with the amendments of amending the rates for the, the landscape maintenance district to remain the same as currently being, being charged.
Separating. The lighting and drainage, they're on their normal schedule, that's fine, but just the landscape, let's just leave it where it's at until we can get some decent landscaping happening in our city. Yes.
And I think the engineer's report can't be, and the, the resolution that goes to the county can be amended in order to reflect that, is it?
Yes, it, it would be amended to reflect what the council heard.
And I second, I second.
All right. Call for the question.
Okay. Gail?
Yes, yes.
Viera?
Yes, yes.
Ambry's?
Yes.
Creighton is absent. Raymond?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item, item thirteen, ordinance approving one plant LLC development agreement regarding cannabis business pilot program for cannabis dispensary located at two six one Business
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and members of the council. What you have before you tonight is an ordinance adopting a development agreement for one of our original cannabis applicants. The applicant has performed as the city has requested, they've paid all fees, and they have successfully negotiated with staff the terms of the development agreement. This particular business, it states, is located off of Business Parkway, and it is anticipated that they would have a type ten retail license. Again, one, one plant has been a, a good applicant to work with, they have been a, a part of this process and extremely patient, so we appreciate the applicant's efforts in this, with this regard, and I'm available to answer any other questions you might have regarding the project.
Any comments from the council, or questions?
Can you explain a type ten retail license, exactly what that means?
In, um, as the licenses are classified by the Bureau of Cannabis Control, there are some storefront license, and there are some that are non-storefront license, such as a delivery operation. It is anticipated that this particular outfit would have, this particular business would operate with a, as a retail component with a storefront-type, um, operation. The next step in the process for them, after they would receive the approval of their development agreement, they would be able to move forward to the conditional use permit and site plan approval process, which would include the security details and the conditions that would be set by, by staff and by the planning commission at that time.
How many type ten, um, retail license? Is this our first one, or how many do we currently have?
Uh, I believe there are currently five CUPs that have been issued by the planning commission with regard to cannabis operations. There are, I think, two to three of the retail operations that have been permitted by that, I wish I had a better number for you, but I know that we have a map available for the planning commission and the city council that details the types of businesses and their locations.
Okay. I know when we agreed this, we had decided to, um, kinda let the market see what, what the city would, would sustain. Um, it just seems like a lot coming in, so I don't know, at some point, we wanna stop and say, okay, where are we? Before we know it, we've got eleven or twelve, and, and that goes beyond where, I know we didn't wanna really stop at three, but I, I don't wanna end up with eleven or twelve either. So I kinda wanna just put it on record that we're all very aware of how many there are, and I, I hate to see them get to this point, and they've gone through and paid fees only for us to say, okay, well, now as a council, we've decided, wow, there's a lot. So just, kinda putting it out there.
Absolutely, and, and staff is very mindful of that, and in addition to just keeping an eye on it, what. an eye on it, what good business practices are, the city, from the very beginning, the city manager and the general services manager have been very clear in that, uh, in staff's directions, that what they're looking for is sustainable businesses. But in addition to that, um, obviously, we have to keep pace with what state legislation and regulation is on regard, with regard to these businesses. In July of twenty eighteen, the Bureau of Cannabis Control implemented controls on, uh, local governments that will be adopting these kinds of business standards to regulate convenience and necessity as part of their business, um, approach to regulating cannabis businesses, and that we have, we have to make sure and be on guard against what they described as undue concentrations. So, that is something not only from a business perspective at the city that we are getting direction, uh, from the administration, but also at the state regulatory level that we have to address as well.
Good. I just, just my thought is to kind of, um, maybe moving forward that we should meet and talk about how many we have and where we're at, and just all be very aware of how many development agreements we have, how far we are, just so these people, like I said, don't spend a ton of time and money only to get to final approval, and, uh, I feel like, I feel like we're really stretching out there at this point, so.
Understood.
And, Cindy, I'll add to what you're saying, is that, um, earlier today, um, a individual approached me and, and he had asked me questions about this, and, uh, I told him to keep an eye on our, 'cause he wanted to come into Atwater to set up a retail store, and, uh, he, I told him, keep an eye on our agenda and you'll see what's going on. He contacted me today and said, looks like we're getting, you're getting overflowed.
Yeah.
And, and I, I agree with you, but I am open to free merchandising and, and, uh, in a free economy, to a point where the, those that aren't gonna make it, aren't gonna make it.
Right. I just wanna make sure that we're not overburdening our law enforcement and our services that the city can offer. Um, you know, we're new, so I just wanna take baby steps and take clean steps and make sure that we're doing it right, so that, you know, we just-
And I don't wanna see Atwater being a, a pot capital of the, of the-
Exactly.
Chaminde King Valley.
Exactly.
That, that was one of the reasons that the city manager instructed staff to generate a map that showed not only the, the geography of these businesses, but the different types of these businesses.
Uh-huh.
So, right now, what we're experiencing, and, and yeah, there are a number of applicants that have gone forward and successfully negotiated their development agreements, but we have been very fortunate in, um, a very diverse cross-section of these types of businesses. You know, ma- manufacturer, you know, could be argued on this, and I, I don't have, I'm kind of in the middle of the road, I, I don't have an opinion other than the one I'm giving by, by administration on this. So, one could argue that, that you could have several different types of boat manufacturers in a particular area, and that may not represent an undue concentration. Retail establishments have always posed a different analysis by staff and by the BCC as well. So, right now, we feel that the city has done a pretty good job at regulating these different types of businesses and their different geography, geographical locations.
Gotcha.
But, being, uh, being mindful of the undue concentrations is something that we've been instructed to manage.
Yeah. I'd love to see that map, and if you could email it or get it to us. Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll open the public hearing and welcome comments from the public.
Well, Dan Devine again. Um, I've been here, like I said, thirty-nine years in Atwater, and I'm not really excited about this coming into our city, um, the legalization and everything. We see problems out in Wenton all the time, we see a lot of things going on with gangs and stuff, and I read on one of these, it said something about cultivation and processing. The hell's that on me? You know what I mean? You're gonna grow the plants, and then you're gonna process the plants, and then you're gonna make all the whatever and, and sell it on a retail scale? Out there in the, I guess that's in the, the industrial park area over there? I'm a little nervous about this, and I agree with you, I don't wanna jump into this thing, hey, let's just have four people come in here, let's, if you're gonna do it, it's gonna happen. I don't want it to be the pot capital of the, of the world, um, but there's one application that's been going on for a long time and very patient or whatever, and I think we take baby steps. I think we just, you know, we just go with this thing very, I don't know what the word I'm looking for here, but just cautiously. So, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
We're approaching for a comment on what you said.
Hold that thought.
No.
All right, I guess Mr. Devine and I are sort of taking most of the public comments tonight, so, um, I, I just wanna second what he said and what, uh, Councilmember Vieira said. For me, I was actually waiting for number fourteen, but they all sort of go together. Um, I've expressed before that I don't want any of that either, uh, we've all agreed that if it's legal and somehow our state or our city can benefit financially, then that's sort of what the city council's looking to do. Um, but I agree with, uh, Councilmember Vieira, I'm confused as to what numbers we're talking about. I mean, it seems like I've been coming in here since January, I don't even know how many of these have been approved now. So, I understand this one, according to him, has been going through the process. So, if this one's been going through the process, I understand letting them go, but then I'm looking down, and I'm not trying to get ahead 'cause I know it's number fourteen, but then that one's on Sycamore, that's now coming over the highway to this side, and I know I'm, I'm not trying to make it sound like the other side of the tracks type thing, but originally, everything was gonna be left out there in the industrial park area. Now, we're talking, if I understand correctly, 'cause there's no a- address on this one, and once again, I know this is fourteen, so I'm not trying to get ahead, but it all sort of goes together. But if that's Sycamore down by Denny's, in, in that area, in Almaty, okay, now we're sort of bringing it closer and closer, and I, I just agree with the council member, we need to figure out what the numbers are, what our limitation is, what we're gonna stop at, and if we're stopping at three, then the first three that go through the whole process, those are the three that we approve. And everybody else, they're taking their chances if they know that this is what we're stopping at. So, I, I agree with you, I'm, I'm confused as the numbers, it's really very, very-
I, I get confused too, because they actually will appear from start to finish on our agenda more than one time. So, some of these, be, from the start to finish, we may see them two or three times as they go through the process on the agenda, which doesn't mean three storefronts, so it does get a little confusing after a while to be like, and then the names kind of run together. So, I think a map that Lori was talking about is gonna give clarification to all of us so we can kind of keep track and be mindful as to what we've approved and where we're at-
And online.
-in the process of each.
Okay. I just spoke with the, uh, city manager, that's something we can also look at putting online as well. Yeah. So, that way we can, everyone will kinda know what's going on, where- Mayor Protem, if I might add just a little bit of clarity on a couple of items, just so that the council gets a good cross-section. Um, when, when we first started the, uh, this most recent attempt at the pilot program for cannabis, there were a number of goals that the city tried to set, and it, in addition to trying to revitalize some of the industrial areas and vacant buildings and things of this nature, um, we, we did have a lot of discussion on the best locations for some of, uh, the cannabis-related businesses, and elected to nominate the light industrial and heavy industrial areas of the city. The Business Park Zone or District within your municipal code carries with it those uses within the light industrial and heavy industrial areas, so you automatically nominated that when the other two areas or districts was nominated. The other thing that we've also been very mindful of is the ever-changing landscape of state regulation regarding cannabis, and it became very clear that if the city and under your direction, we did not implement a cannabis-related program, that the state may very quickly do it for us. So, as much as we, we have, we, we share the same cautions and concerns, the regulation is, I won't say shifting sand under our feet, but it is continuously something that we have to deal with.
Thank you, Greg.
Mayor Protem, um, so, I know that tonight, we are asking council to continue the next two items, so I know we'll be talking about this again at our next, um, council meeting, we can have the map available, we can put it overhead, and I know that some of the areas that we're talking about, that's gonna be easier to identify because we're not, even though we're seeing a lot of cannabis businesses, they're not all for the same type of businesses. So, realistically, they're, for the dispensaries or storefront, there may only be a couple, whereas the other was maybe manufacturing, distribution, cultivation, so that will also be identified on the map and easier for you to see how many.
And those type of businesses, like manufacturing, those aren't open to the public, correct?
No, and they're all inside.
They're all inside?
No.
Very strictly regulated, no access?
And-
So, they're, they're somewhat invisible too.
The, the chief, uh, uh, the chief of police, Chief Shalador, uh, I went with him to a, uh, manufacturing facility in, uh, in Kalinka. It, it's completely different and very secure. Oh, uh, it was the old, uh, city jail, and it is very, and it's regulated, and they get, they get the plant, they process the plant, they create this multimillion-dollar product, uh, product, and they're able to sell it, and on the other side of that was a dis- a distribution, uh, center, and they're distributing out. And like, uh, staff said, if we don't do it and, uh, get, uh, reap the benefit along with them, then the state will. And I'm sorry, but right now, I don't have a whole lot of faith in what the states do
Our public comment is still open. Anybody else would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. What is council's pleasure?
Uh, for number thirteen, I'd make a motion to approve staff's, staff's recommendation as presented.
Motion by Vieira, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ambries, go ahead and call for the question.
Ambries?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Vieira?
Yes.
Creighton is absent. Raymond?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number fourteen, ordinance approving WB Farms LLC development agreement regarding cannabis business pilot program for cannabis cultivation, distribution, and dispensary on the property, property located at Sycamore Avenue, west of Wenton Way in Atwater. City manager?
So, actually, um, this item, we are asking that council, uh, continue this, the, the applicant themselves have asked to continue this item to the next regular meeting, um, in order to continue the negotiations with staff. Um, so, we would ask that you open the public hearing and continue it to the next regular council meeting.
Okay. Any comments from the council?
Is there, is there a reason why, and what you, he just wants to-
We are still in negotiations with the applicant, with the new legal counsel that we have.
I see.
Seeing no one else, we'll open it up to, uh, public hearing, open up to public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back.
Yes, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to the regular meeting of August twelfth, two thousand nineteen.
Motion by Vieira, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kale, go ahead and call for the question.
Vieira?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Creighton absent. Raymond?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item fifteen, ordinance approving Cannibal LLC development agreement regarding cannabis business pilot program for cannabis dispensary on property located at seven-four-one Enterprise Court.
Again, Mayor Protem and council, we are asking that would this item be continued to the next regular council meeting as well, to give staff and the applicant, um, additional time to negotiate with new legal counsel.
Any comments from the council? We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back.
Um, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to the regular meeting of August twelfth, two thousand nineteen.
Motion by Vieira, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kale, go ahead and call for the question.
Ambries?
Yes.
Vieira?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Creighton is absent. Raymond?
Yes.
Item sixteen, consider a resolution approving application submittal for statewide park development and community revitalization program grant fund, otherwise known as Prop sixty-eight.
Mayor Protem and council, um, executive to the city manager, Martin, has been taking the lead on this, we are, um, drafting a grant application for a Prop sixty-eight grant for Osborne Park, and Janelle will have a presentation for you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. The statewide grants administered by the Office of Grants and Local Services created and approves over seventy-four hundred parks. Parks are places where children can play, friends and family can bond, and people connect with nature. For many reasons, parks funded by this program will create more humane and healthier communities. The idea is to revitalize parks in underserved communities and to embrace resident engagement. This grant program is the largest in California's history, with over one billion in funding between the two thousand eighteen Prop sixty-eight and two thousand six Prop eighty-four Bonds Act. The grant funding will allow for renovation of an existing park. The city of Atwater has chosen Osborne Park for the Osborne Park revitalization, revitalization project to foster better recreational opportunities for our entire community. As part of this project, there will be added recreation features such as a splash pad, walking jogging path, upgrades to lighting and restrooms, upgrades to the athletic courts, drought-tolerant planting, AD enhancements, shade structures, and possible public art. There's no fiscal impact and is a no-match-required grant. The grant by itself may fund the entire project. There's been three public meetings so far. The first one was at the July fourth, Fourth of July festivities, and I think most of you actually saw at the Fourth of July, and the public was actually given opportunity to state what they would like to see in the park, and we had about eighty resident participants there. The second public meeting was actually the planning commission meeting on July seventeenth, and the third one we had on Saturday at Osborne Park itself, and we had our boards that are, you actually see at the back of council chambers that we have tonight, and we'd lack, we'd actually like the public to participate this evening, those that are here tonight, to put what you would like to see at Osborne Park, put there. We have the items that are on the board, that you could actually say what you like, and we could see that some have actually participated already, and it gives you an opportunity on levels one, two, and three to say that, what you would like to see at the park. Things like I had already mentioned, AD enhancements, dog park, splash pad, uh, lighting and restroom upgrades. Um, at the last public meeting at Osborne Park, we were there for about an hour and a half, and it was really neat because there was actually two young men there that come from Fresno, and they skate at the skate park. And that park was actually there, done by Lori Waterman, our city manager, put there on a grant, and they come from Fresno to skate at that park. They do a, um, what they call a skate park, um, tour, and they come all the way from Fresno just to skate there alone, and they gave us some really great ideas to put at Osborne, a drinking water fountain and some other ideas, but I thought that was really neat that they come just from Fresno just to skate at that park alone. We also talked to a gentleman there that comes there every Saturday morning, and he walks and he clocks what he does every mile, so he gave a really great idea that if the walking jogging pa- path was put at Osborne Park, that he would like to see how far he's walked, and that it would be great if he could bring family with him, and it would be a nice path, rather than him having to go to and from and walk through the baseball field, that he could actually go and see some great scenery, and to know that he wouldn't have to carry his phone in his pocket to know if he's gone already a mile, that he could have a mile marker to show him what he's done. So, that was some really great ideas and resident input that we've had. Some city partnerships that we have are Golden Valley Healthcare Centers and Tree Partners, which Tree Partners has already been a great partner that we've had with some other grants that we've had. That Lori, again, has been wonderful at rating, um, writing some grants for us, and we've also applied, uh, partner with Conservation Corps as well, and we're still working on the scope of the grant, but again, that takes a lot of resident input, so we're really excited about that. And our last public meeting that we're gonna be having that we're really excited about is our movie in the park, and that'll be on Saturday, July twenty-seventh, and the movie starts at dusk, and we're gonna be watching Breakthrough. So, if everyone can come and have a lot of input on that last meeting, that would be fantastic, because the city is very excited that this is something that we can, again, with everything that's going on with the city right now, that we can have resident input on what they would like to see, but, again, like everything else with the positive progress that the city has, that we can get this grant and have resident input, because that is the most important part. and have resident input because that is the most important part and revitalize Osborne Park because it is a park that the city does attend to. There's a bus stop right across the street. And again, that's something else that the residents can say they'd like to see upgraded and have more input with something like that.
Janelle, is there a sign in sheet tonight to be circulated?
Yes, there's a sign in sheet in the back. And again, that's something that everybody has already started to sign in as well. And the stickers are in the back also, numbers one, two, and three on the items. So you can put the stickers on there. And I'll be in the back at the end of the meeting if you have any questions, but it's public comment. So Mayor Protem will open that as well.
Thank you, Janelle. Any comments, questions from council?
I'm super excited to see this happen, especially with the grant. Osborne Park is centrally located and used by almost everyone in the city. It's, it's, you've got your, your skate park there, Little League, all the way from the little kids to the big kids. Kind of under my wing, I'm excited and have been working with, uh, city manager with the other parks that are already in the area with some development fees that we have to revitalize some of the smaller parks. This is a bigger project, so getting a grant to do it, to take care of this is, is really exciting. And that leaves the other money to go ahead and start fixing the little parks that we have. We need benches and lighting, um, some ADA compliant, um, groundwork there and maybe some new equipment. So this just kind of gets us going. And I think over the next year, we're going to see a lot of really positive things happening in our park. A lot of surrounding cities are also applying for this grant. Um, I think it's fantastic that money's out there to, uh, to make improvements for the kids. And, uh, you know what they say about idle minds, so if we keep the little monkeys busy, then they won't, they won't be getting in trouble.
So the way you got to the park and the priorities is through public input?
Yes.
Okay, okay. No one has any comments or questions up here? We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any comments from the public?
Hello, my name's Daniel Perez, twenty-three, eighty-three Redwood Avenue. Uh, just a question if, um, the bathrooms were to get bypassed because who doesn't want a splash pad, you know? Is there any way we can refocus on that and go and try to fix up the bathrooms? Because my wife has a friend who lives near the area and she has five kids and they constantly go out and take the kids and stuff and they don't want to use the restrooms. And I'm, I'm assuming the city, I mean, I mean, who, honestly, who doesn't want a splash pad over stinking restaurants? But is there a way that we can focus on that after the fact, after the grant has been done? You know, we can just try to, you know, look at that?
Well, back there, you'll see that the bathroom revitalization is one, and that's where we're prioritizing to see what is, what is the priority, what, what do the citizens want the most?
Right.
And we've talked about the splash pad there. We're also focusing on a splash pad at Veterans Park as well. Um, and these aren't real big facilities. We've driven around and seen them, but in the summertime when the kids are done playing ball, to be able to cool off and.
Of course.
You know, but if it's, if it's spent correctly, there should be more than just one or two things we can, we can do over there. But, but when Janelle talked about prioritizing and the different colors, you can actually give your input as to what is your, what is the main priority?
I see.
You know, of those facilities.
Thank you.
And yeah, we have, we have a new public works director who is, uh, on, on top of his game.
Right, right.
So I think that's going to help with all the bathrooms. And city manager Waterman, did you have something to add?
No, I think council member Vera said it well. Um, these are just ideas that we would like to see incorporated in the grant, but they're not limited. So obviously, we're going to address the big issues first and then additionally what we can incorporate to enhance it.
But those ba, those restrooms have been in need for a while.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other comments from the public? I don't know, Pastor Miller's moving, I don't know. Okay, well, I'm not sure, I, you know, I got used to the up down.
You have to wait for one direction.
Believe me, I know. All right, uh, seeing no more, uh, comments from the public, bring it back to the dais.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number three one zero one dash nineteen, alteration, submittal of the application to the California Department of Parks and Recreation.
All right, motion by Kale?
Second.
Second by Ambries, go ahead and call for the question.
Kale?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Creighton is absent, Raymond?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Comments from the public. At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Janelle, do we have any comment cards?
I do, I have one from Chris Martin.
Good evening. I know I have a three minute meet, uh, limit, so I'd like to put out what I have to say. And then if you have questions after, I don't think there's questions on this. It's just statements from me as a private citizen. I'm not asking questions, so I'll need no answers. I'll speak from my personal interaction with the cadets over the years and the concerns I have in increased gang activities. The kids that join the cadets over the years and the concerns seek out the organization instead of gangs. We know gangs start pulling kids in at fourth and fifth grade. How the cadets have been visible in the community at Castle Open Cockpit Day, Christmas parades, Fourth of July parades, fireworks parking until this year, graduation at both Atwater and Buick, helping at the Homecoming Parade and other high school athletic events until recently. The cadets and mentors spend countless hours with the toy program at Christmas, signing up kids, collecting gifts and donations, choosing gifts, making sure gifts are given. The cadets have helped with the National Night Out, which is an event inviting the community to step up and be visible through programs like Neighborhood Watch. I've seen homeless food, homeless people given food by the cadets and they were directed to services. The cadets are taught and shown respect for others, the military, the police, the aged, and patience as the city tries to strip them of their patches, their uniforms, then try to tell people the cadets are funded by the city, which they aren't. The city doesn't pay for their insurance, their snacks for the cadets at events, their gas for vehicles or replacing uniforms and patches because they were told by the police chief that the blue color they were wearing or the uniform they present, had, excuse me, had previously been wearing, they couldn't wear. So they purchased new black shirts, pants, and patches. The kids in the program don't pay for their uniforms. The cadets make their own money to support their own group. Their projects and the junior giants are part of what is called PAL. The chief had members of the Kalinga Explorers and members of the Kalinga Sheriff Department doing what the local cadets have done for years at the Fourth of July parade. The chi, the chief told the local cadets they couldn't do it. So he brings a group from another county? Is he concerned over the ages? Yet he is so concerned over the ages of the cadets. But I've not ever known any of the cadets filing for any complaint of an injury or such. The police chief sent a CSO reserve officer to seize PAL cadet storage units. The city doesn't pay for the units.
Ma'am, ma'am, can, can you finish real quick?
Yes.
Okay.
If you decide to abolish the cadets, so go the junior giants. You're looking at about three hundred and fifty young people not supervised, but the gangs can choose them. I will have numbers available for you later. Just think about what does the city have for our youth to do with adult mentoring during the evening and summer.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Monique Diaz, twenty-two, ninety-eight Fay Drive, Atwater. Um, I'm here as a mother of an Atwater PAL cadet also. Since nineteen seventy-seven, our PAL program has supported by numerous police chiefs with no problems. This program is not costing the city any money as they support themselves and provide all uniforms and equipment through fundraising and contributions from our citizens. My son has always wanted to be a police officer, so as you can imagine, he looks forward to being there. Our cadets are a great bunch of kids who love what they do. They're not out getting into trouble or involved in the gangs or doing drugs. They do a lot for their community. As you can see at the Atwater PAL Cadets Facebook page, they spend their Wednesdays at the VFW, serving their veterans dinner, as well as other activities they're involved in. On Memorial Day, they were at the cemetery placing flags on the gravesites of their deceased veterans. There's not much in Merced County for these kids to do. This program gives them somewhere to go, teaches them respect, responsibility, and gives them pride. You should be working with them, not against them. So why, after all these years, are you trying to take it from them?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, uh, city council members, Gabe Santos, thirty-three ninety-one Shoreline Drive. I also have other properties in the general area of Schaefer Lakes East. My concern is, well, I want to, first off, thank you, uh, for all your help, council member Vera and, uh, uh, city manager Waterman for our, uh, the signs and everything that's going on at Manuel Barrows Park. Greatly appreciate it. A couple of concerns that we still have in that area are the trees. I think it's great that we are seeking grants, uh, and we have finally filled our public service director, um, position, public works director. The concern I have is we have twenty-four trees in the Manuel Barrows Park that are city owned. I'm not sure, uh, the good news is that nine of those trees are inside the new cyclone fence line with Outwater Elementary School District. So my concern is these trees haven't been touched in quite some time. I've lived in that area for almost twenty years. Uh, it seems like we do, uh, damage control, no preventative maintenance on those trees. Uh, they're very overgrown, um, and I think it's great that we are looking at, uh, grant, uh, positions, uh, and grant funding. Um, however, we still need to maintain the parks that we currently have. And I think it's great that we can, uh, shift some of those funds, but we need to put that on the, on the radar for hopefully twenty nineteen in this fiscal year. Uh, fifteen of those trees are directly in the Manuel Barrows Park. I, uh, work directly with other cities, uh, on a regular basis during my, uh, full-time position. And other cities are seeing a significant, uh, increase in trees coming down due to the long drought conditions that we had and, uh, just trying to be preventative. Um, I live directly across the street. We have seen several limbs coming down. Uh, they are diseased trees, uh, so they, they probably should be assessed, uh, by an arborist and hopefully we can prevent any injuries from occurring in the park. Uh, but I don't want to, uh, end on a negative note. Thank you very much for all your participation and it's good to see, uh, city council moving forward with a lot of these good projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Gabe, I think you and Mr. Haddix are going to become good friends.
I think we'll be.
Um, anyone else? Seeing none, we will close the public comment section. City council matters. Ms. Vera?
Lori, um, the tree partners, what, talk to me a little bit about, don't we have some kind of agreement with them to help us with our trees as long as we don't touch the trees? Or can you kind of fill us in a little bit? I know we've talked about this before.
So one of our previous grants was a tree inventory grant in which all of our trees are outlined and mapped in a program. But the problem with that is it's like anything else, it's a good tool, but it's only as good as it's being used. So with our new public works director, I know that it, he's, we're, we're giving him a lot to do, but he's going to, um, succeed and he's going to make it happen. Um, but one of the things that is going to be, uh, going and looking at the trees, taking inventory, making sure which ones are ours, which ones are healthy, like Mr. Santos said. Uh, we are having a lot of issues with, because of the drought, the water wasn't getting down to the roots. So there are some, uh, tree partners has partnered with Atwater because they were part of that grant as well. And they have, um, expressed a commitment to us that they would be happy to help us maintain these trees as long as we weren't doing something to make it harder to maintain them. So if we were not doing it correctly, um, which would be making more damage than, than good. So they have offered their assistance in either, um, teaching our guys how to maintain them. Um, they do have arborist on there. We used to have one, we no longer have one at the city, but they do have one that they, um, that works with the city and assists us with even our ones that we planted downtown. So we can reach out to them and put them in contact with Mr. Haddix.
Okay, so the avenue, if a, if a citizen has a concern with a group of trees or a certain tree, what is the avenue that they should express their concern to get that to the tree partners to see, to see?
So we want them to come directly to us, to the city. Um, call our public works department at three five seven six three seven zero. Um, Mr. Haddix has implemented a new, uh, work order program. Um, this is inventorying all work orders that come in. Um, he is requiring that to be closed out, they have a completion. So, um, at least there'll be a tracking mechanism in place that way we can take care of it. And it'll be up to us to get ahold of tree partners and, and communicate and coordinate that work.
Okay. So kind of just going through there, I wanted to make sure, Gabe, that you got an answer. And then I wanted to, to thank you for being a voice of, of the community. And for the other phone calls, I know I had mentioned earlier, daily, we do get the phone calls. And, and without it, we don't, we don't, I don't see every inch of the city, but I want everyone to know that we are here to, to serve our citizens, to serve, um, our community. So please, if you do have a problem, um, there are a lot of things you may call us for that, you know, we, we just don't have any control over, but we can at least point you in the right direction. So I was excited to see the non-smoking signs go up too. Um, we talked a lot about parks tonight and I'm, I'm just so thrilled and excited to, to see the grant, to see us pushing forward and applying for that. I'm super excited to get input for the citizens. So I want to, um, encourage everyone to know who your voice is in your district, to let them know the parks in your area, what your desires and concerns are. Because as we move forward, if everybody kind of covers their district, we can, we can implement some of those ideas. Um, again, we don't have a ton of things in our community for the young children to do, but the parks, as we upgrade them, that, um, that'll, that'll take a lot of time off their hands and give them a health, safety, fun place to go and, and divert some, some of that energy. Um, so exciting things with the new, uh, uh, public works director. And we're seeing some new things being implemented there, very exciting, the work order. Um, also, I'd like to, um, note and welcome Dan Garcia, who's our new, um, code enforcement officer. And I hear some really exciting things happening in that area as well. So almost at every point where we were finding a dead end, the city is expanding. And, and I know to the citizens, it seems slow, but we are moving forward. And I think six months from now, we're going to kind of look back and be like, wow, look at the, look at the new park. Look at, look at what the, what has happened here, look at what has happened there. And so, you know, just before you know it, you'll look up someday and, and see a sign of the positive progress. It's, uh, it's exciting to work with a council that we seem to all be moving in the same direction and, and have the same motivation. And, and with that, I think over the next year, we're going to see a lot of really good things. It's a very exciting time for all of us.
Mr. Ambries?
I am too, uh, I, as well with parks, I'm glad to see that we're going to go for the grant. Um, I hope everyone does, you know, take the time to go ahead and pick what you guys feel we definitely need out there. I too have been receiving different, uh, calls from residents about different matters, especially when it comes to, uh, code enforcement. So, uh, thank you, uh, Danny Garcia for coming aboard. Uh, looking forward to working with you. We've already had a, a good conversation today about that. I've also had, had, uh, office hours this month, uh, and got to talk with some residents. And that was very delightful and, uh, I'm, I'm hearing as everyone's concerns when, when they bring them. So I, I will definitely look into the future about, uh, scheduling some more time. Probably not during the day like we have this past few times. I, I did have to take my own personal vacation time in order to do that, but I will definitely get something scheduled for, uh, in the future for that. Um, I do want to bring up, uh, a situation that happened back on the thirteenth, um, in the Walmart parking lot. My daughter happened to realize that when we were entering the store, that she saw this little boy just, just sitting on the side of Walmart. No, no adult figure next to him, just, just the, the child there with, with a cell phone. So she approached the, the child and apparently the child got left at the store. So, you know, we, we did what we needed to do, but, uh, what I, what I want to do is praise one of the Walmart employees there. I'm just going to give her first name, her. I'm just going to give her first name. Her name's Brittany. She was out there and she assisted and stayed with the child until the parents arrived. This could, could have been just an honest mistake, you know? It's a hot day. You've got everything loaded up. You thought the kid's in the car. Unfortunately, this child wasn't. But I definitely wanted to send out a big thank you to Brittany. Because had that been my child, I would have wanted someone to help out and keep my, my child comfortable and, and make sure that they're okay.
Thank you. Mr. Cale?
You know, I like quotes. And I saw one today and it said, "Everything good, everything magical happens between the month of June and August." Like cooking biscuits in a car. I saw. They were trying to cook biscuits in a car. It's hot. Please make sure that everybody hydrates up and do what they should be doing. Try to find a cool place and try to enjoy the heat in the next week or so. I too want to welcome Daniel. He's made, as a new code enforcement officer, he's hit the ground running. He's doing everything he can for positive progression. And we've already seen the evidence of that already. And I want to thank you and welcome you. And Mr. Haddix, you also, I can see, today you got beat up a little bit, huh? But I, I do want, I do want to say this, you know what? Like Councilmember Vera said, you know what? We, we have a very, very good council here. And we all worked hard to create this so that we, we have this. And then the staff worked very hard our last meeting so that we can have a balanced budget. And trust me, we're going to try to get to these issues because we all have the same issues. Nobody wants to drive down the street and go, God, that is ugly. That's nasty. And we've been hearing about it for months and months and months. But we're, we're going to make positive progress out of that. I will say, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, Dan, welcome aboard. Happy to have you. Furnas? Heavy's the head that wears the crown, man. Godspeed. You're going to do a great job. We have no, no doubt about it. Real quick, I just want to touch on, there were comments made about the chief and PAL tonight. I know the chief has reached out to the directors a few different times and never got a response. But he's open to listen and he wants to talk to people. Obviously, I can't speak for him, but in having spoken to him in the past, he supports Junior Giants. He doesn't have a problem with cadets except for the age, which was mentioned. There were some very young kids that never should have been out in the street. But I do agree, we need things for kids, so we need programs like that. And he's also looking at the explorers. So there are things in the works he's looking at. And he's not, he's not against it. He supports PAL a hundred percent. So it's just, how do we get there? Because it's about the safety of the kids. You guys mentioned the gangs, things like that, coming and taking over. But there's more than just that. It goes into earlier. If nothing's happened yet, thank, you know, thanks to Jesus. Because you get a seven, eight-year-old out there in the middle of the street doing traffic control, what's going to happen to that seven or eight-year-old? You know, he may not get picked up by a gang because he may be in a wheelchair. And that's just, that's a major concern that the chief has shared. And I know that if you guys would like to talk to him, he is always open. So that's one thing that I think everybody needs to know, that he's very open, very transparent. What was that? Ms. City Manager?
I can get your information and put you in touch with him. But you can come, usually he's here Monday through Friday. He is gone this week through Wednesday, but he will be here Thursday or Friday. But even on the weekend, I mean, we've got a sergeant in the back room. He can take your information and forward it to the chief. And I'm sure the chief will reach out to you.
Yeah, I know that is one thing that he's real big on, especially is just being involved with the community. And kids are our number one priority. They're our future. So we want to make sure they're taken care of, you know, no matter what we need to do. So then we just want to do it the right way and the safe way. And that's, that's the chief's big concern as well. So we'll, we'll figure something out and hopefully you can talk to him. And we can, you know, move on from that to a better, safe environment. But I know he has expressed interest. And I've spoken to him several times because I try to help out with the Junior Giants quite a bit. And we do have Junior Giants Week here in the city of Atwater. I mean, so we're pretty involved and we want to, you know, keep it going. So that's one of the, one of the main things. I would like to thank Mr. Cale for our shirts. Now, we all match. Look like a bowling team and it's great. And other than that, I don't have anything. I know, Gabe, you had your hand up real quick? Oh, yes. And, and that's another thing. Coffee with the Chief, the first Tuesday of every month. It'll be at Jant's Cafe. Do we have the calendar?
I'm looking at the calendar right now. August sixth, yes.
August sixth at eight, eight AM? August sixth, eight AM, Jant's Cafe. And he's there, he'll sit there all day long with you if you guys want to talk.
He gets at nine.
Nine, nine AM.
And it's on the Facebook as well, City Facebook, City of Atwater Facebook and the, the police as well, Police Facebook.
So that's all I have. All right, meeting is adjourned.